Good evening, Chair. Calls the order of public hearing for Bill 23-033, Refunding Bond Bills. Counsel, we have with us Treasurer Robbie Sanless, Mr. Christopher Sennett from Miles and Stockbridge, and Mr. Richardson from the administration. Whenever you're ready.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much. Clarence A. Richardson, Jr. for Harford County Government. As noted, we have Mr. Sennett from Miles and Stockbridge, and Mr. Sanless, our treasurer. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sennett, who will make some comments on the specifics of the bill, to be followed by Mr. Sanless.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, counsel. Mr. President, my name is Chris Sennett, as mentioned, and I'm here on behalf of Miles and Stockbridge, serving as bond counsel to Harford County. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Bill 23-33 at this public hearing. This bill authorizes the county to issue its general obligation refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $60 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to refund the county's outstanding Series 2013A, Series 2013B, and Series 2014 bonds. The Series 2013A, 2013B, and 2014 bonds are referred to in the bill as the outstanding bonds, and the 2024 bonds to be issued are referred to as the refunding bonds in the bill. The county is authorized to issue the refunding bonds under Title 19 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as well as Section 524 of the Harford County Charter. The bill, at Exhibit A, describes the original principal amount of the outstanding bonds, the remaining principal amount of the outstanding bonds currently due that will be subject to refunding, and the enabling authority bills of the county council that originally approved the issuance of each series of outstanding bonds. The provisions of the bill give the county the flexibility to refund the outstanding bonds, as the interest rates in the municipal bond market may be lower in early 2024 than the rates in existence when the bonds were issued in 2013 and 2014. Therefore, it may be in the best interest of the county to issue the refunding bonds and to sell the bonds at a public sale to maximize savings to the county on its outstanding debt. The bill further provides for the public sale of the bonds to be approved by council resolution at a later date, and the procedures for such sale, including the form of notice of sale that we will publish in the Aegis. In addition to the maximum principal amount of $60 million for the refunding bonds, the bill further provides a maximum maturity of 30 years for the refunding bonds. The bill also states that prior to the issuance of the bonds, the county shall determine by that resolution the essential terms and details of the refunding bonds, including the rate of interest, the maturities to be redeemed, and the amounts of the outstanding bonds to be redeemed. Finally, the bill allows the county to execute a purchase agreement with an underwriter who will market the bonds and handle the public sale of the bonds on behalf of the county and this council. That describes the legal authority for which the bill will be offered. I am happy to discuss any questions the council may have on this legal authority or any of the topics I've discussed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sennett. Mr. Sanless.
Sure. So I'll just walk through some of the process. It's been a couple of years since we have done a refunding bond sale, but these were all bonds that were sold actually during the Craig administration in 2013 and 2014, and they were budgeted by the Craig administration and the county council, and in some cases, the Harkin administration. I think even some of these might even go back to the Rehman administration, which just kind of just goes to show that when we're dealing with these long-term bonds, these 20-year bonds, how they do kind of transcend different administrations and different councils. So we will coincide this potential bond refunding sale with our new money sale for the new debt that the county will need to undertake, and that will all take place on January 23rd. So at this point, you know, we're not entirely sure if there's going to be any savings from these refundings. The market is a little bit in flux, and right now it's relatively tight. It looks like only the 2014 is showing any savings, but I would like to get this authorization from the council so that if the market does be favorable, that we could maybe potentially take advantage of savings for all three issuances.
Thank you, Mr. Sanless. At this time, counsel, Mr. Pennon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sanless, I guess the way for me to understand it, this is kind of just like a refinancing of a house for a lower interest rate. What would we hope to be, right?
Exactly. We wouldn't extend the terms traditionally, you know, so we wouldn't be taking on extra years. We wouldn't be taking out any extra money, so it wouldn't be anything along the lines of, you know, taking out equity out of your home, just refinancing the existing debt, generally for the existing term. So if we get a better rate, or we think we can get a better rate, we'll go forward, and if not, we wouldn't. And I should always note, too, that anytime that this entire process, we will come in front of the county council, as soon as we get the results of the bond sale, whether or not we do the refunding, but we'll definitely be doing the new money, and that rate and that sale will be approved by the council, generally in a special session in the afternoon.
Just a quick follow-up question, which I know probably varies based off Exhibit A and B, based off of the years of the rate, but what, on average, if we're looking at 3, I think you're, where is it, 3.25 is what we're hoping, anticipating?
Yeah, if we can, you know, something in that range. You know, right now, the coupons of the existing debt kind of range between 2013B of only, of 3% to 2014 at 3.8, so I said that 2014 is probably the most likely. And then, yeah, hopefully that we would get something in that 3.5 rate, and again, when you're talking about, you know, $60 million, sometimes a few basis points, can generate into some significant savings over the course of several years.
Were we a AAA bond rating at that point, where maybe...
We were. We received our AAA bond rate in 2014, because it was, last year, I believe, last year the Craig administration received the AAA bond rating. 2013 may still have been two AAAs and a double A. I'll have to check, but anyways, right around that time that we did achieve the AAA status.
Which helps us get a lower interest rate.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
So, good evening, Mr. Sanless. What is the, what's current bond rates run on? What do they follow? What kind of treasury bills, or what's the, because you're talking 3.5%, where I know the market for other rates are, you know, 6%, 7%, T-bills, where T-bills are they? 10-year T-bills, 20-year T-bills?
Generally, a little bit lower, because one of the benefits that we are able, and the federal government and the IRS has allowed municipal and state governments to sell tax-exempt bonds.
All three are tax exempt.
So, yeah, these will be tax exempt, and so when you sell a tax-exempt bond, you are generally able to pay a lower coupon, because the individual doesn't have to pay taxes on it. So oftentimes, you know, you'll see a significant difference from what a straight-up, you know, corporate bond, or a, you know, treasuries pay federal tax, they don't pay state tax, and also oftentimes, we're able to get the best rates. And the idea is that municipal governments, state governments are using these for, in the public good, you know, we're building schools, we're building roads, we're building, you know, those type, you know, fire stations and like, and because of that, you know, we're afforded that tax break, which enables us to secure lower rates than what the market would otherwise permit.
So they were 30-year bonds, we're probably going to go to 20-year bonds on the one we're refunding.
Yeah, well, these will still stay, we won't extend the, I mean, you theoretically could go to 30 years, but we're, in these cases, we're not going to extend the amount, so we're talking about 10 years.
But then we might package that with new debt, which might be 30 years.
That'll be a separate, that would be a separate sale, though. So, yeah, so if we do, if we do a refunding, you know, we, in addition to the new debt, you know, we would come before you in January and say, you know, the new debt is, we're selling that for 4%, and the refunding, we're selling for, you know, 3.5%.
What was, what did we get last year when we...
For new debt was 3.25. You know, it's marked up this year, you know, we're hoping to still be under 4. Again, you know, there's been a lot of...
Still Miles and Stockbridge?
So, yes, Miles and Stockbridge are our bond counsel, and then Davenport is our financial advisor, so, you know, we'll go forward. Again, we'll need to receive our credit rating, so we will go in front of the three credit rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, and S&amp;P, to receive that rating, which we would then use for both the new money and as well as the refunding, and then generally about two weeks later, January 23rd is when we would have the sale, and it'd be a competitive sale. So generally, the big names in investment banking, the JP Morgan, the Banks of Americas, the Citigroup's, you know, all bid on our bonds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Bennett?
I was hoping maybe you could explain for the good of the county at large, you know, where do these savings end up in the, you know, budget barrels?
Yes, so there's a line item in the budget called debt service, which is, you know, no different than a line item in your personal budget, with, that would be mortgage or, you know, some type of car payment or something like that. And so to the extent that we can have lower debt service, you know, you always have to pay back your principal, but then the amount of interest is lower, then that frees up money that can go towards schools or libraries or parks.
But it would be capital projects, not operating.
Yeah, but, so, yeah, today's capital, so when we bring forth the capital budget, you know, you'll see a whole bunch of projects that have bonds as a funding source, and eventually, those bonds are sold, and we generally, you know, sell them after we've actually completed the work, because, you know, there's some arbitrage issues and some IRS rules. But today's capital projects are tomorrow's debt service, and in that debt service, you know, that's money that, anything we can save on the interest payment is stuff that we can then use for other community needs, again, schools, libraries, parks, what have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
How do these rates, when they're like, for the most part, they're half of what the normal rates are that you see out there for the normal public, you know, 7%, 8%, you know, is normal rates for people who, right now, are doing financing of their houses. How does this come under that it's at such a lower rate? And that's part one of the question. Part two, I guess this is before us now, so you can be prepared if, in fact, the rates go down, so you have this in front of you when the rates go down. Now, does that happen like overnight, and so that's why you want to be prepared?
It's a little bit...
So what I'm trying to figure out is, if this is before us right now, what's the hurry when we don't see anything out there right now where these rates are going down? But, so maybe you could explain that to us.
Well, so to the first question, the reason why we're able to get lower rates is not only the tax-exempt status, which we talked about before, so for the individuals purchasing it, you know, whatever interest income they earn is not taxable, so that means that they'll accept the lower interest rate, because their effective rate is higher. The other part is, you know, again, we're a AAA-rated county, and we're pledging our full faith and credit of the county to pay back these bonds. If you even look in the charter, you know, even if we wouldn't fund debt service, the charter allows me to pay that debt service, because it's an obligation that we're making into here, you know, as a collective. So all of that, that full faith and credit, knowing that we have, you know, the tax base that we do enables us to, you know, secure those lowest rates. It would be like an individual coming in with, you know, the highest credit score and the most amount of collateral, you're, we're kind of a, you know, a really strong credit case, if you will, and so that enables that. As far as the timing goes, some of that has to do with how our local legislation here works. We generally, we needed to bring this in front of you right now, so that we could have 60 days before it becomes effective, so the hope is, is that you'll pass this next week, which will then be 60 days before that bond sale in January of, January of 2024, which means that we'll, you know, meet all of those legal requirements. And so because of that, you know, it generally takes about five, six weeks to introduce legislation, and then 60 days after it, that's why we kind of have to be proactive and say, hey, we might have some opportunities here, let's draft this legislation, let's get in front of the council, let's get their approval, so that if we are able to do, to do it as part of our sale. And generally, we try to combine it with the other sale, because, you know, we're already incurring, you know, in expense of bond counsel and Davenport, and you have to pay the credit rating agencies and all, so you're trying to kind of take advantage of the timing to do that, along with your new money sale, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening. Thank you for answering the questions, and with this, we'll conclude this public hearing, and we'll take it up at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Chair calls the order Legislative Session Day 23-029. I would ask you all to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by opening prayer by Councilman Riley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Blessed be our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the opportunity to serve the people of our county. I pray that you will guide our council as they meet and discuss matters which we are to our county. I pray that their motivation in everything that we do is good of the public and not our own. I pray that we be able to solve our county's problems and make good policies that address them. Hope us to be competent and excellent in our governance. Hope us to listen with understanding and goodwill, and hope us to speak with clarity and restraint, and give us a spirit of service, as in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Agenda Item Number Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Harford Living Treasurer nomination may have a motion to approve the Cultural Arts Advisory Board nomination.
Mr. President, I move to second.
To move...
I move to approve Frances Ann Matthews as a Harford County Living Treasurer.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's moved as second to approve Ms. Matthews as a Harford Living Treasurer nomination. Is there any comments? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennon?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment of Frances Ann Matthews as a Harford Living Treasurer is hereby approved. Presentation of Proclamations, Harford Living Treasurer. Councilman Riley, please step down. Ms. Matthews, and whoever else you'd like to bring with you, please.
Let's stand.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Can we put a few on the other side of, please?
Whereas Frances Ann Matthews received the Harford County Cultural Arts Board recommendation to the Harford County Council for recognition as a Harford Living Treasurer, and whereas Frances Matthews began her career in Harford County as a physical education teacher from 1970 to 2004. In 1975, Ms. Matthews fielded the first Maryland State Field Hockey Championship Team at North Harford High School. In 1976, she was named the Aegis Coach of the Year. Ms. Matthews started the North Harford High School lacrosse program and organized the Hawks Booster Club. From 1982 to 2004, she was the athletic director and coached field hockey, JV girls' basketball, varsity softball, varsity girls' track and field, varsity girls' lacrosse, and boys' volleyball. Ms. Matthews facilitated the acquisition of the new stadium scoreboard and served on the Athletic Legislative Committee, and whereas Ms. Matthews sends postcards during the trips with her husband to more than 30 former students and senior citizens during the summer, Ms. Frances feeds friends and neighbors from her bountiful garden. She provided shelter for friends in danger of domestic violence. Over the years, Ms. Frances has participated with the Slate Ridge Presbyterian Church members to serve free meals to the community. She has also made monetary donations to match funds collected for the benefit of various church organizations. And whereas Ms. Matthews has been dedicated to our school and community during her 53 years in Harford County, she is known for being reliable, fair, a great communicator, and objective. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 14th day of November 2023, to hereby proclaim Frances Ann Matthews a Harford Living Treasurer, and be it further known that her lifetime experience and contributions to the Harford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Harford County, that her memories and history will be recorded by the Harford County Public Library Oral Historian, and will become part of the oral history collection of the library.
So as you can see, Frances has been very busy. In fact, she's been so busy that we couldn't fit everything on this proclamation that we have here. So I just want to add a few anecdotes. From '91 to '95, she was a member of the Governor's Citizens Cabinet, where she learned how things worked on a state level, and she held follow-up meetings at Harford Community College to inform the public of the happenings in Harford County. And also, she's been dedicated to our school and our community during her 53 years in Harford County. She's definitely a Harford Living Treasurer. I want to thank Barbara Lowe for nominating her, and I didn't realize that we both live in the same city of Wayford. So on behalf of Wayford citizens and also District D, we'd like to congratulate you as a Living Treasurer.
Thank you much.
She'd like to take a... Would you like to say a few words? They'd love to hear from you.
I'm sure they would.
[laughter]
I didn't know you were going to tell my whole life's history. I want to thank Bobby for nominating me in the cultural arts group, for selecting me. It was a surprise, believe me, I am stunned. She has too much to do without doing this, and she did, and I appreciate it. I appreciate my husband for his support, and I had a surprise from two of my former field hockey players here, who I happened to tell, I told one, and the word went out, so they're here to support me, and I appreciate that more than anything.
Awesome.
Thank you much.
This is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for nominating her.
Would you like to get a group photo?
Jim, come back. Come on back.
Okay.
What'd you name it? Oh, I was just waiting for the call.
She's directing.
Can you just step this way, just a bit? It's perfect. Oh, no, sir, you're fine. You can step out. Yeah, it's good. All right, good.
All right. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Congratulations. Agenda Number Six, Special Presentations. Counsel, it's my pleasure and honor to welcome Elizabeth Wise, Dr. Beretta, and Colin Ward to come forward, please. Give us an update. Ken Ferrera, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there first, to give us an update on Upper Chesapeake Health.
Hi, good evening. My name's Elizabeth Wise. I'm the president and CEO at the University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Health.
If you could just pull those mics a little closer to you.
Of course.
Dr. Fermin Beretta, Chief Clinical Officer for University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Health.
And Dr. Colin Ward, Chief Operating Officer for Upper Chesapeake Health.
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you, counsel, President Vincenti, the Harford County Council, as well as the Harford County community. What we plan on doing today is to give you an update of the state of health care in Harford County. We want to talk about some of the questions that came up in prior public hearings about ED wait times and hospital throughput, and what we want to do is tell you where we're at and what we're doing to address the issue that we take very seriously. We also want to give you an update of our facilities and what's happening with our openings, including the timing and what you can expect next year in January and February. But before I get started, I do want to answer some questions that came forward prior to the Harford County Council meeting, and I want to start out by saying that we do every three years what's called a community health needs assessment. And based on, and we're required to do that, because we're the recipient of funds from the federal government, particularly for Medicare and Medicaid dollars. And based on that assessment, we partner with local community partners, whether it's the Department of Health, we interview key stakeholders, to take a look at what are the needs, the health care needs, of the residents of Harford County. Once we get those findings, we put together what's called an implementation plan, where we partner with other people in the community, specifically our Department of Health, to take a look at how we can collectively address the health care needs of the community. I say that because one of the, some of the questions that come up are, what are we doing to invest in the community? We have an active community health group that focuses on some identified opportunities related to health care in Harford County. Some of them have to do with smoking. We have a higher incidence of smoking in this county, so we offer smoking sensation classes. We have an incidence of high blood pressure, so we focus on what we can do around what we call hypertensive screenings. And most recently, we were declared a smart stroke county, where we're focused on what we can do to educate people about what are the signs and symptoms of a stroke, and what you can do if you have those signs and symptoms. Call 911, we want you to get to an emergency room as quickly as possible. Some other things our community group invests in is vaccinations, as well as, we know that we have a higher incidence of diabetes, so taking a look at prediabetic care, and then what we can do if you are diagnosed with diabetes. As I said, we work collaboratively with partners, and it's really based on the needs of the community. Additionally, we have what's called a Patient and Family Advisory Council, PFAC for short. In health care, we like to have a lot of acronyms, they're usually four letters. And that council is made up of community members that we meet on a monthly basis that gives us input and feedback related to our programs, what we're doing well, and what we could do better. So we have always been looking for people that are interested in joining our PFAC group, and if someone has an interest, let me know, we would certainly like to get you through the process. Those are some of my opening remarks. I'll address some other things at the end. Before I turn it over to Colin and Dr. Beretta, one of the things that I have been asked since I got here, and believe it or not, it'll be two years at the end of this calendar year, is do we need more beds in Harford County? Do we need more hospital beds? And as of today, I'm going to say no, and Fermin and Colin are going to share with you why I'm saying no, but I am going to tell you it's something we always will evaluate. We know this is a growing county in terms of demographics, that people are moving to the county, but we also know that we are an aging county, and people are getting older, and as you get older, you have health care needs that need to be addressed. So I'm going to have them answer why I said no right now, and I'm going to come back at the end and talk about our openings, and then, you know, certainly open to any questions.
Okay. Thank you, counsel, president, and counsel. As we get started here, it's important to note that patient efficiency, movement through the system, is an issue that is a challenge across the state. In fact, Maryland ranks 50th out of 50 states for certain metrics that are measures of emergency department efficiency, and some of that activity actually happens up in the patient units, but the symptom presents itself in terms of bogging down the emergency department. Only Washington DC has a worse performance. So there's a lot of activity statewide and through the Maryland Hospital Association to identify and implement strategies that will help with efficient patient flow. And what goes into that, that management of what we call the daily census, are some things that are planned and things that aren't planned. So planned, an example of planned would be a surgical schedule, so we know a week from now how many cases are on the books for that. And what are unplanned are transfers that have to come in from other hospitals, readmissions, these are patients who have previously been at the hospital and come back within, typically it's a 30-day period after their previous discharge. And then, obviously, the biggest variable on a daily basis is how many people come to the emergency department, and how many, what portion of those patients need to be admitted. So that's the how many we have, plus the how long are they at the hospital? And the factors that can impact how long someone's at the hospital include turnaround times on tests, so a CT scan or an MRI, or how long does it take to get a lab test turned around? How long does it take for the patient to respond to treatment? Sometimes it can be a couple of days, sometimes it can take longer than that. And then there's some procedural availability. Those are the kind of factors that tell us how long someone might be in the hospital, and when you add how many are here, plus how long they're here, that's what drives your efficiency, or your lack of efficiency, in some cases. And so we used to see this 10 years ago, 15, 20 years ago, as the winter flu season, when you would see a lot of patients coming through the emergency department for respiratory issues, and over time, and particularly after COVID, we see less and less seasonality around that. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beretta, and he's going to walk through some of the performance metrics that we have that relate to patient flow.
Thank you, president and county council. The, I'm going to try and actually describe three... The, I'm going to try and actually describe three main metrics, and they're not unique and they are not new. Think of a patient that comes in through the emergency department, goes through the front door, that's time zero. From the time they enter the emergency department to the time that they are admitted, so for that, I'm going to call it ED length of stay for the admitted patient. And then, there's another one called ED arrival to discharge, so from the point that they enter the door to the point that they leave the door. So, they're actually not being admitted, and they were seen, evaluated, and treated in the emergency department, and then discharged. And then finally is the EMS, what they call transfer of care, but essentially, it is the time that it takes the AMBO crew to take a patient from their stretcher onto one of ours and transfer the care officially over to us. And I'm going to describe each of these metrics. These are national metrics that have been utilized to measure efficiencies of hospitals. They have brought these back forward for the entire state to try and address and measure both where we are in comparison to other hospitals in the state, but also to see how rapidly we can improve these particular metrics. So, we have been monitoring, monitoring these from a state level, as well as through University of Maryland Medical System level. How are we doing? Hartford Memorial is actually performing quite well compared to others within the state, actually in the top quartile, if you will, at 467 minutes for, for the ED arrival to the inpatient bed. For Upper Chesapeake, they are right about average for the state at 665 minutes. And then, ED arrival to discharge, so again, this is the see and treat from the emergency department. Hartford Memorial is about, you know, top third of the state, and Upper Chesapeake is right around the average as well, at 278 minutes. The ED transfer of care, which is of course very important to us, we need to have that time as small as possible, because our, you know, if we have inefficiencies or problems trying to get patients, you know, through our treatment plans, get them better and out the door, if there's a backlog in the emergency department, our problem cannot become their problem. So, we monitored this well before, and we've had great partnerships with Hartford County EMS. Hartford Memorial is among one of the best in the state. They have two ways to measure it. One is where are you from an average standpoint? But the most important metric that they look at is something called being in the 90th percentile. So, that's saying 90% of all of the cases get offloaded in how much, how long of a period of time. And for Hartford Memorial, they are at 20 minutes, which is quite excellent. Upper Chesapeake has been averaged to actually better than average, better to the good, around 42 minutes. And that is something that we continue to track closely as well, and that has an escalation process, not just within our own team, but also with Hartford County EMS. And they have, Colin and I sell numbers on speed dial. If there's any help that we're able to provide real time, we intervene. And then, we talk about length of stay, and one of the things that I want to make sure that we take away from is when we have, you know, patients, boarders, that are waiting for beds upstairs, that impacts the emergency department. And as Colin had stated, it's more a symptom of an issue as it relates to volume, as it relates to acuity, and as it relates to efficiency. So, although these are called ED metrics, or emergency department metrics, they're really hospital throughput metrics, and they are beginning to change the verbiage on that to properly reflect that. What helps, first, the patient has to get better, right? Patient actually needs to get the treatment, needs, we need to get the right diagnosis, we need to have a good, strong treatment plan in place. Now, all of the ancillary testing will impact it. Once we know that the patient is going to be ready, the time that we put that discharge order in, of course, starts the cascade of events that allows a patient to be safely transferred or discharged home, or to a skilled nursing facility, if that's where they're going to be next. We measure that by the percent of patients that have a discharge order before the 11:00 hour in the morning. We have been seeing that increase over time through process improvements, as well as workflow improvements with our hospitalist team. We can also see changes in length of stay when we are dependent on placement to another facility, and I mentioned skilled nursing facilities. And we have seen through our analyses, when we send someone home, we're actually performing better than what is expected according to our database and statistics. But when we go to a skilled nursing facility, we have some additional challenges, either from administrative standpoint, or from federal laws that we have to follow that require us to unfortunately sometimes wait or delay a transfer to a skilled nursing facility. So, it usually takes us a little bit longer to get someone to that next destination. I think those were the two main things that I was going to talk about with regards to length of stay and Upper Chesapeake performance. I'll turn it back over to Colin to talk about our initiatives.
Yeah, so what are we doing to try and improve the amount of time that patients are in the hospital, and try and improve the efficiency so that we don't back up the emergency department? So, first, as you would in any industry, you start to look for where, where is there time that is not value-added time? There are some things in, that have been traditionally built into healthcare called blackout periods. So this is the 15 minutes before or after a change of shift, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM typically, where you would not send a patient from the emergency department up to an inpatient unit, because that group is just coming on and trying to get familiar with the patients that are already upstairs. We've been able to find some efficiencies with our electronic medical record to be able to eliminate that blackout period and pull patients up from the emergency department without having to rely on a blackout period there. We, as Dr. Berettow alluded to, we've changed our hospitalist rounding model in July, so that the patients that are nearest to discharge, closest to discharge, are the patients that are rounded upon first by our physicians to start each day. That's enabling the discharge order to go in, and then the cascade of events that eventually lead to the patient's discharge can happen earlier in the day. Typically, our emergency department starts to see more activity around 11:00, 11:00 AM. You start to see the ramp up of volume. So the earlier in the day that you can get patients maneuvered out for a discharge, the better. We are actually on Thursday piloting what's called a departure lounge. This is a model that has been successful in Maryland and other organizations, in the University of Maryland Medical System, as well as other places across the country. There's a lot of downtime where everything is completed for the patient and they're awaiting a ride. We think that we can come up with a safe, comfortable place for patients in a departure lounge while they await that. We've added additional triage nurses in the emergency department to help quickly identify patients and begin their care process through a model we call vertical flow, which is a rapid turnaround model for the ED providers. And in some cases, we bring the providers directly to the patient. We have partnered on a couple of initiatives with the local EMS community, including creating a new offload area in the Upper Chesapeake Emergency Department that creates a little more privacy and ease of handoff, as well as implementing what we'll call supply vending machines at both UCMC and HMH. This enables the EMS crews to restock without having to return to the station. They can, they can acquire any of the supplies, disposable supplies that they need directly from UCMC before they, or HMH before they return to service. And we've also added a nurse for high-peak hours to be able to help facilitate that transfer of care that Dr. Berettow mentioned. That's the time that the EMS hands the patient over to Upper Chesapeake.
All right. So, how does that all impact length of, well, how will the change to Aberdeen actually impact our length of stay? And this is one of the reasons why the medical staff is looking forward to this change in both regionalizing care and making us more efficient, because take any subspecialty group that is covering Hartford Memorial and covering Upper Chesapeake, when you're able to centralize procedural, procedural availability, and for that matter, the limited resources that everyone deals with with regards to physician and APP staff, we get more efficient. And when they don't have to split as much time between the two facilities, they will get more efficient at Upper Chesapeake. At Aberdeen, we are planning to have incremental observation beds. We will be able to safely care for patients there that will be within a 24, 48-hour time period length of stay. Now, we won't be able to take care of all patients there, because we will have limited resources that, you know, we won't have ORs, so you won't have surgical cases there. But, and if they require an inpatient stay, we will not be able to keep them there as well. So they, those will be transferred down to Upper Chesapeake. Also, because of all the construction that you've probably seen, the ED reception area over at Upper Chesapeake is going through a bit of a renovation to be able to make it larger. That has definitely impacted our ability to efficiently care for patients. We've made some adjustments that I think has at least compensated for it for now, and we're looking forward to those completions, and then we'll be able to, I think, return to a more efficient flow for caring for the emergency department patients.
So, if I could just return to the central question, the question was about do we need more beds? And so, what we're saying is that the, it's the efficient turnover. How quickly do patients maneuver through our system that is more important perhaps? And, and recently, actually, earlier this month, the New England Journal of Medicine article sort of confirms that by indicating a number of different throughput initiatives, what we call throughput initiatives, efficiency initiatives, that have been tried in the past and worked, and tried in the past and have not worked. And almost always, increasing bed size either in the emergency department or inpatient units expands costs, because now you have to staff, perform additional tests. And what ends up happening is you have more patients that are sitting in this boarding status, more patients waiting in the emergency department longer. And you haven't tackled the real issue, which is how quickly and efficiently can you maneuver patients through? So, that's why we can say with confidence that at the time, and as we would always evaluate, that our biggest challenge is about how do we efficiently move patients through the system as opposed to needing additional beds in the community.
Okay, I'm going to finish up by talking about our facilities. And I'll start with the one that's opening on January the 10th, which is our Ambulatory Surgery Center. That is on the first floor, it's Tollgate and McPhail, and it is short-stay surgical procedures. We will have a ramp-up period where obviously we have to get some regulatory approvals that we'll have to do a number of short-stay cases, but that is the plan for the first floor of the Ambulatory Surgery Center. On the second floor, sometime in March, we will relocate our orthopedic air unit that's in our pavilion over to what we're calling Pavilion 3, which is the Ambulatory Surgery Center I just talked about. And that will be sometime in March, and we will open up the Hand Spine and Orthopedic Institute. On February the 6th is a big day for us, because we will open up the Bel Air Bed Tower, which is located on top of the Kaufman Cancer Center. It has the capacity to care for 72 patients. There's one floor of shell space, and then the fourth and fifth floor are a combination of what we call observation or short, short-stay patients, one day, two days, and then a combination of inpatients, which are longer lengths of stay. February the 6th for the Bel Air Tower. The Aberdeen Medical Center will also open up on February the 6th. The Aberdeen Medical Center has an emergency department. It has observation beds, beds, 17 of them, short-stay patients. And then, on the second floor has what we're calling the Behavioral Health Pavilion. It has 33 beds for inpatient behavioral health, and then it has adjacent to it an outpatient behavioral health, and something that's called a partial hospitalization day program, which is five days of intensive therapy for patients that don't need to be on the inpatient side, but need to have a little bit more focus, as opposed to just going to an outpatient psychiatrist or psychologist. On February the 6th, we will also close Hartford Memorial Hospital. Our plan is to ramp down the census at Hartford Memorial Hospital prior to the closure, and so that, and we have plans in place and logistics, very detailed logistics of what we're working through related to the transfer of patients, related to the transfer of equipment that's required. We're working with the Emergency Operations Center to plan the routes the patients will have to move as they move either to Aberdeen Medical Center or to Upper Chesapeake. We also have an outside vendor that's working with us through all the logistics, that this is what they do. They move patients and they open up hospitals. We're also using state EMS resources that will have an AMBO bus for the day of discharge that can accommodate larger numbers of patients if we need to move them as well. At the Aberdeen Medical Center, we will also have a helipad to, if we need to fly patients either to Upper Chesapeake or to one of our other facilities. Currently now, we have to put patients at Hartford in an ambulance, move them about a mile down the road. So this will be much more of a convenient transfer for patients if we need to move them. In the Aberdeen ER, we have five bays that are dedicated to the care of geriatric patients. They have the amenities as you age, things like softer floors, natural light, larger print. And we plan on obtaining a geriatric emergency department designation as we open up the facility and have the volume and education associated with that designation. In addition, throughout the ED, as well as the observation area at Aberdeen, we have installed technology that allows for a couple different things. One is if we need to see a provider virtually, that provider can do a virtual knock, go into the room to see the patient, work with the nurse to assess the patient, and even if the family is not there, connect the family remotely, if they're not in-state or not local, to have them be part of the visit. And we've installed that technology for a couple reasons. One, for patient experience, but also to the extent that we can keep patients at Aberdeen and bring the care to them. That is one thing, one reason why we've installed the telehealth technology. Fermin talked about the behavioral health component on the second floor. Something that we've added is a medical component, so those patients who may need oxygen or other types of medical care, currently now, we have to bring them down to a medical surgical floor. We will be able to keep our patients in the Behavioral Health Pavilion, as opposed to bringing them to another med-surg bed. One of the things we've also done is with Hartford Link, set up a bus route for patients that need to move between, have a degrace, as well as come to the Aberdeen Medical Center, so there's a convenient route if people need, and don't have, need public transportation to get to the facility. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is the Aberdeen Health and Wellness Center, which is connected to the Aberdeen Medical Center. That's been open for about 18 months. It has physician practices in it. It also has outpatient wound care, outpatient rehab. And then, when we open the facility in February, we're going to be opening up imaging services, which includes mammography, CAT scan, MRI, X-ray, so you can do walk-in if you need testing, as well as outpatient laboratory services. I think I've covered everything. Okay. So, that's really what we wanted to talk about, and I, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. And I always want to say thank you to the community for putting your trust in us and care. We will continue to communicate as we get closer to the opening of the facilities, particularly with our patients on the day of. We want to make sure if they come into the Hartford emergency room, that we can either get them to Aberdeen, or let them know that, the time that we'll be closing the facility so they can appropriately be cared for in the right area. So we'll stop there and open up to any questions.
So, Elizabeth, let me start by thanking you for, as you said earlier, having each other on speed dial. We have you on speed dial. And I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate, appreciate the fact that you pick the phone up, you respond. I know differently than some of the concerns that we hear from, heard from the citizens in this chamber. I reached out to you and thought it was important that you come and give us an update, and you responded immediately. We appreciate that. And then to sit here tonight and hear you talk about 20 to 40 minutes with our medic units to offload patients and get back on the road, that's amazing compared to what we had in the past. So I want to thank you for all that you do each and every day to help improve the healthcare system that we have here locally. And Mr. Jan Dredana.
So, good evening. Thank you, Council President, and welcome, Elizabeth, and welcome, Dr. Berettow, and welcome. Dr. Beretta, and welcome, Colin. Appreciate you guys being here. Tons of information. I do have a couple of questions. I think about two years ago, we were in a room, I think, with you, Dr. Beretta, where the ER, you guys had like a command center. Is that still up and running? Do you guys still use that?
That's the pay center. I'll let Colin speak to that.
Yeah, so we have a, the pay center, the administrative nursing coordinators sit in that room all day, every day. They have big screens that display all the patients that are registering in the emergency department and what their status is. They can track them along their path to admission or discharge, as Dr. Beretta noted. They have security cameras they can pull up. We can see if there's one ambulance there, or seven ambulances there at the back, and that helps us deploy resources differently. And then supporting them are a number of different folks that are in and out of that pay center throughout the course of the day. And then we, we communicate amongst ourselves to remove barriers.
So it sounded like it was a big help. I think you guys had just opened it up when we, we were there. Sounds like your times for transferring from the EMS has definitely picked up. But do you have enough rooms in the ER? That seems like it's maybe been a little bit of an issue, that people come in, you don't have a place to put them in the EMS. Is that...
Yeah, so I think the, the challenge is the, the speed of the, of the movement of those patients. So if we have a day where we have a lot of patients that are waiting placement upstairs, so on a given day, we admit a certain number of patients to the emergency department. And some days, patients come through, there's a higher level of acuity, and more patients are competing for the same number of beds. And then other days, we admit fewer because the acuity is less. When patients are waiting to go upstairs, that takes a space that ordinarily would turn over multiple times in a six-hour period and, and creates gridlock. And so that's what we're trying to do. If we can create the space upstairs, we could pull that patient up and then use that. Not unlike if you were running a restaurant. If you could, the quicker that you can get that patient through, you can get more patients in.
So, we did the tour of the stroke center. I thought it was great. Lots of information. The biggest thing I want everybody to realize and get out there is that if you think you're having a stroke, or you had a stroke, to call 911. I think a lot of people listen to our broadcast here, and so I think it's super important to call 911 if you, if you feel like you're having a stroke, call. I know you guys said, I think it's within two hours that you can, two or three hours that, once they get in, if you're having a stroke, if they can get into the hospital and get the medicine, that, that'll certainly help. Is it two?
Well, I mean, we actually have options for patients that lead up all the way up to 24 hours. We measure our door-to-needle times, which we want below 60 minutes. So the faster you get to us, the sooner we can give you the clot-busting drug. And the drug we're using right now, the acronym, it's only three letters, TNK, is what is utilized. And it's important to understand that Aberdeen will have that ability to be able to administer that medication. And then the, there's another procedure, you know, they call it clot retrieval, where kind of like a cardiac cath will go in and actually open up the artery or manually remove that clot. Now, I think it's very important to understand that our response time for that is going to be much more improved with the Aberdeen configuration, with the helicopter pad right next to us, because we don't have that delay. Actually, and I was quoted, about 40% of the EMS, we, we try not to use EMS at all for any interfacility transfers, but it does happen sometimes if it's a time-dependent diagnosis. Stroke could be one of those. And if we have to fly them, because we don't do the clot retrieval at Upper Chesapeake, it's done at, you know, University of Maryland, Hopkins. The ability to fly those patients out faster can be done at Aberdeen.
Is Bel Air also a stroke center?
Yes.
Okay. So Bel Air Stroke Center. And I don't know how this affects you or doesn't affect you, but I know a lot of older people, their biggest concerns is Medicare, and they go in, if they're not admitted and they're only under observation, they don't get their stays covered. So I don't know how that gets resolved, or, but I know that's a big, in the older community, their concern about that, if they don't, if they don't get admitted and they're just under observation, and the observation is like 24 hours and so forth, that they don't get coverage. I don't, I don't know how you...
I don't, and I know that so much, no coverage. I know there's different out-of-pocket expenses, definitely not the forte, per se, for that. But that's a Medicare situation across the United States, not necessarily something unique to, to Upper Chesapeake.
And a couple more questions. Cancer metrics, are they up, down in Hartford County?
Can you say cancer metric? Are you talking about incidence of disease in the county?
Anything you could tell me that's where we're trending or not. I, I don't know.
Well, unfortunately, you know, we are continuing to see an upward incidence of lung cancer, breast cancer. I don't, don't have them all memorized, but I know that those two are still continuing to go up. And of course, we base our investments in our, you know, in the Kaufman Cancer Center, depending on those, those types of trends. Choleraquel is another one that we're keeping our eye on, that we continue to see some, some increase.
Talk about the improvement in mortality?
Yes. There, there, we have cancer center metrics that we look at on a regular basis, an entire database of quality metrics. Everything from mortality, which is the final metric that we all wanna look at, which has seen improvements. And we've also seen continued improvements in access for cancer patients, so that our speed to diagnosis has actually improved.
Of the MRIs, is any of them an open MRI?
No.
No. Okay. And then the last thing I have is that I, I've heard from a bunch of nurses that they're concerned about the safety when they leave at nighttime, that they stop the bus and to get out to their vehicles, they have to walk, or I guess get securities.
Do you know the location where they're, is that at...
Bel Air.
In Bel Air.
In Bel Air. I've heard that from a few of them. And they don't wanna tell me their names, and I was like, don't tell me your names. I'll just, I'll, I'll bring that up. And I know you're, I know you're, you're moonlighting at nighttime.
Yes, I am.
And I, and I was in the other night, and I didn't see you. I was looking for you.
Called HIPAA. Privacy. That has been brought to our attention, particularly the lighting out in the parking lot. So we'll continue to take a look, we'll look at that again.
And, and we have, if any of our team members wants an escort by security, they can have an escort. They can be driven right to their car. Depending on which lot they park at, the shuttle bus will take them literally right to their car after hours.
Yeah. I, they just said, you know, I think some of them are like, ah, I'll just walk. And, you know, they feel a little uneasy afterwards. And I'm like, well, you know, if you have the opportunity, but I guess, whatever. So, anyway, thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it. And thank you for all your hard work and efforts. And, and a few times I've been there, you guys have been really good. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Jardana and Ms. Sodles.
Hello. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all that you do every day. I did have the opportunity to tour the new Aberdeen campus twice, and it is absolutely incredible. It will be a huge attribute to our county, and the technology in itself is just unbelievable. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you guys for the presentation. I thought it was very thorough. Just have a few follow-up questions. The new county EMS ambulance, how has that transition been, and is that contributing to the reduction of that turnover at the hospitals?
Just in terms of the county taking over?
Yeah. Just one centralized, you know, agency doing it, rather than, you know, different fire companies all...
Yeah. I mean, I think as far as, I mean, we haven't necessarily, you know, felt, I'd say, any positive or negative impact, per se, but our, our communication lines are, you know, pretty straightforward with Rick Ayers and his team.
Right. Thank you.
And we, sorry, just to tack onto that, we recently met with them, the new Aberdeen facility, last, last week, I suppose that was, recently. And, and so there's always an exchange of information and trying to figure out how we can partner better. So we have pretty good communication.
Yeah, we actually had the entire EMS leadership come to Aberdeen and the community center, which is down in the basement, and actually went through a map of transition and the wind down of Hartford Memorial, so that they understood where we were going to be and what we were going to do. And, and I thought we had some great exchange of ideas. And they even, I think they were talking about some of volunteer crews trying to come and help us out.
Very good.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, we have mutual goals, right? We, we want the patients because we wanna take care of them, and we want them back on the road again to, to, you know, get back out in the county. So to me, it's just maintaining open lines of communication. And we talked about the resources that we put in, because we wanna accept the patients as quickly as possible.
Just a few more questions. As far as compare and contrast with Hartford Memorial versus the new Aberdeen facility, on kind of what the capabilities are. I know that you mentioned a few of them. There's no OR and no kind of short-stay there at the, at the Aberdeen facility. Is there anything else that the new Aberdeen facility can't facilitate that the old Hartford Memorial could?
So there will be short-stay beds there. There will not be what's called inpatient beds. So patients that need to stay longer, usually than 48 hours, will need an inpatient stay and be transferred. There will not be an intensive care unit there, and we will not have surgical capability.
As far as beds, I know that you have the bed tower, which is gonna provide, you know, more bed space to where you can move people from the ER to there, I'm assuming, right? Do you have a number of increased bed space with the new expansion in the Aberdeen facility, just to kind of...
For what we call medical-surgical beds, it's 17 incremental beds in the county in Aberdeen. The 72 over the Kaufman Cancer Center are essentially taking the 72 from Hartford Memorial and placing them on the fourth and fifth floors over the Kaufman Cancer Center. So we pick up 17 incremental for med-surg patients, and then we pick up seven patients for the behavioral health pavilion on the second floor.
Very good. And then the nursing vacancy rate, recruitment and retention, are you seeing issues with nurses or even doctors on, on, you know, recruitment and retention within both hospitals?
I'll take the nursing one. You can take the doctor one. We have seen improvements in our recruitment efforts, as well as our retention efforts. So, you know, if you had asked me about a year and a half ago, we had a high turnover rate in the twenties, and people were seeing that nationally. We're down in the low teens and below national average in terms of our turnover. And that is a focus for us. We wanna continue to retain the great people that we have, but we also wanna continue to recruit. And we've been seeing improvements in our recruitment for registered nurses, as well as, we have a homegrown in-house nursing assistant program, certified nursing assistant program. So we've seen significant people that are involved in those classes, that are able to work on the units.
On the physician side, it has been an interesting dynamic. You have the demographic piece where we've had many retire. COVID probably accelerated some people's retirement, you know, across the nation. And then we've seen some interesting dynamics in certain specialties. I'll bring up radiology for one. With recent AI advances, residencies have actually gone unmatched, or increasing in the numbers of unmatched residencies because of concerns that you're going into a profession that maybe you don't need as many radiologists because AI will end up being able to perform the reads. I did not particularly see that coming over these past few years, but evidently that is something that has impacted a lot of different hospitals across both the United States and us. And that's something that we've had to deal with and manage. And then I have to talk about, you know, subspecialty care, the University of Maryland Medical System, and our ability to partner with the School of Medicine has brought some of the top-notch surgeons here, spine surgeons and Dr. Kavanaugh, Dr. Pavona, thoracic surgery and Dr. Shelby Stewart. You've seen really world-class care brought here, close to home. And I, I think, you know, we have been able to offset some of the challenges, but we continue to see it specialty by specialty. And each one actually is a unique dynamic sometimes. OB-GYN is another challenge. That one has been difficult because they have been converting to a, many have been converting, like we have, to a laborist model, similar to a hospitalist, where the PCP stays in the office, and a physician stays in the hospital to care for the patient. That is beginning to happen in OB-GYN specialty, but there's not been an increase in residents to actually compensate for that. You've actually doubled the demand, but you haven't increased the residency. So it, it has been a challenge, and more so now than, than I've seen in the past.
Thank you.
I just saw for one other comment, you know, I mentioned that we see improvements, but it's not anything we take for granted. You know, nurses have a lot of options in their healthcare career. And so, you know, we take it very seriously, initiatives to put in place to keep, to keep people in Hartford County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. You know, as the representative for District F, and as a resident of Havity Grace on the 600 block of Bourbon Street, you know, February 6th, I think, is a scary day for a lot of those people in my community in Havity Grace. I appreciate the bus loop being added to get people over to Aberdeen. But I know for a lot of people, you know, I think of the people on Dever Street, or Bloomsbury, or, you know, in, on, you know, that side of town, who could walk to Hartford Memorial. And that walkability being lost is a, is a huge loss to our community, to be able to walk to services, or, you know, even in an emergency. I mean, I live close enough, if I broke my leg, I could probably still walk over to Hartford Memorial. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure I expressed that out loud. The other concern that I've heard from many people is the worry of, you know, the change in the gravitational pull for ambulances. Now, being more centralized to Bel Air, I know some ambulances will go to Aberdeen, but for intensive care, you know, some of those more severe situations, you're gonna need to get to Bel Air. And as ambulances are focused in the Bel Air area, it'll be harder to pull them towards our part of the county. And I just, and many people worry about increased time to get an ambulance to your house. And I just wondered if that's any part of your plan in the transition, to make, how to keep ambulances in the Havity Grace area for quick-response times?
So let me explain a couple things related to EMS, you know, protocols as it relates to Aberdeen. You know, we worked very diligently, even years ago, trying to take into account, if you have stroke, the minutes that it takes to be able to transport. We did not wanna see that impact the Havity Grace community. And it's why we campaigned so long ago to be able to get us that acute stroke designation, which is not something that exists in other freestanding medical facilities. The regionalization of care had actually been occurring long before we ever get to February 6th. You know, OB-GYN hasn't been available there for quite some time, thoracic surgery, vascular surgery, other specialties. The protocols are actually not supposed to change much, you know, for, for EMS. So we're gonna be staying in close contact with, with Rick Ayers. We actually have an EMS meeting in the next couple of weeks to talk about how we do all that we can to keep what we can at Aberdeen, and to make sure that we're using Upper Chesapeake appropriately. So that would be a guardrail, if you will, if we did see any change in EMS offload times as a result of the change. And we would definitely work with our EMS partners to figure out what we could do to, to help that.
And then just as far as, you know, public relations and communications, what kind of outward work is being done to reach out to community members in the Havity Grace area in preparation for this transition, so that they're aware of the transition, they're aware of how services will change, you know, how to get to where they need to be, all that kind of stuff, for people who aren't watching the news, aren't glued into what's going on, and just live in the area, and all of a sudden, you know, what's being done to get them to know about this?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I just asked that question last week. We're putting together a communication plan, but I'd certainly like to hear from you about what might work best with the Havity Grace community. We have a couple options, whether it be tours of the facility, including virtual tours, but also either community meetings or a fact sheet that has information that would go out to the residents. But if you have some ideas about what might work best with the community, I would love to hear them as well.
You know, I think, for me, the biggest priority would be our communities of highest needs, like St. John's Towers, St. John's Commons, the Graw, and then those pockets of community that we know don't own cars. If they could be mailed information, I think that would be huge, so that you guarantee they get it. I, I just, that's the other thing, I just worry about the information drought of, you know, people not realizing this change is coming. And, you know, when every moment matters, if they drive to the, an empty building, that's a big issue.
Yeah, what we were, that's helpful. Thank you. What we were putting together was, we're calling it an infogram, which just has what services are available, the timing of them, what's gonna be available... of them, what's going to be available on what date, and specifically what time. So, that's helpful that we would definitely mail them to the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
Couple of questions, because, you know, unless I heard it right or wrong, I heard a contradiction in terms here. Tell me how long someone waits in the emergency room, how many hours someone waits in the emergency room before they get into a room?
What part is the contradiction? I didn't actually-
Well, just answer that question. How long do you have to wait in the emergen, and I have a lot of people talk to me about how long they have to wait in the emergency room. Can you tell me how long?
Yeah. So, it's difficult to give you the precise time, because depending on your acuity, I just mentioned stroke, we plan to get you in, seen, treated within 60 minutes. If you have, for a heart attack, it's going to be much faster.
Well, you just said 11 hours.
If you're talking about ED length of stay for discharged or admitted patients, that's two different timestamps at the end of either the point in time where they're going to be admitted, or to the point in time that they're going to be discharged.
Numerous people, including some nurses and all from the hospital, told me that the normal waiting time in the emergency room, that's the contradiction, called an emergency room, is somebody has to wait 10 to 12 hours before they get admitted and sitting in an emergency room. And you say, and then it's hard for me to believe that you say, "You don't need any beds." I guess you don't. You've got people sitting in the emergency room for 10, 11 hours. I would say you need a lot more beds. So, that's the contradiction that I got, because I have, I have a situation where my mother-in-law lives with me, okay? She's 60, she's 97 years old, and she had a stroke. And we called 911. This was on a Monday about 6 o'clock. We called 911, paramedics came right away, they worked on her, and they sent for the ambulance. The ambulance came, that was a good, that was a great thing. So, they go out and direct them into the driveway. So, I go out there and direct them. That's the good news. The bad news is, it's come to Baltimore County, because they didn't have one in Hartford County. And then they came, and they're calling around where they're going to take her. They called the hospital here, and they said they cannot take her, they have no beds. So, we had to take her down to John Hopkins Bayview for her to be treated there, because this is 6 o'clock on a Monday, and no beds available, can't take her up at the, up at the hospital. And I've had numerous people tell me that this wait is 10 to 12 hours in the emergency room. So, if you can straighten that out for the public, you're on TV, explain why it takes 10 to 12 hours in the emergency room. That's a contradiction in terms right there, to call it an emergency room. Because they ain't an emergency room if somebody comes in and they got a broken arm or something, they gotta sit there for 10 to half a day? It's a half a day. So, tell me where I'm wrong.
Well, I think you're, I appreciate your comments. I think you, you know, you're taking your anecdote, you know, hours, and trying to apply them to make a point. I just have to respectfully disagree.
Well, you said it was 665 minutes.
So-
What's that come out to? That's what you said.
Yes, I did. And I explained in very clear terms, what you're talking about are the time that you hit the door to the time you actually speak with and talk to and get treated by a provider, be it a doc or an APP. What I was referencing was from the time that they hit the door to the time that they decide to get admitted, or the time they hit the door to the time that they are discharged from the emergency department. So, those were the times that I was referencing. And then we have other quality metrics for those, you know, emergent, time-dependent diagnoses like stroke and heart attack, where we measure those in minutes.
Well, I just don't understand when you sit there and tell us it's 665 minutes, which is 11 hours, and for somebody who's waiting in the waiting room, and I see some people in the audience right here shaking their heads, "Yes." And I've had numerous people from my district tell me, you know, that's the waiting room they go, they go to other hospitals, because they can't even get into this hospital. So, I'm glad you got that new building going. Maybe that's going to help rely, relieve some of this pressure on the emergency rooms. But it's hard to call something an emergency room when you gotta sit there for a half a day before you get admitted to the, into the hospital. So, that's my complaint.
Is that it, Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gingerdine?
I just hope there's no snow on February 6th.
Me too.
That would-
Me too.
So, I would just, I would just like to close in saying that if I understand correctly, at the Aberdeen campus, there's room to grow over time. I know it has to be a long process with the Maryland Health Commission, everything else down the road as the need comes. I also want to address Mr. Bennett's concern about medic units in Havity Grace. The county now has two medic units in the city of Havity Grace. I think the ambulance corps has two, maybe three, units there. So, that's five in the city of Havity Grace, which I think is ample. Yes, the need does change from day to day. And I know that wait times change from day to day in the emergency room. I've been there myself, and it just depends on the amount of traffic that you have. But we appreciate all that you do every day, all of your team at, at all the facilities, and look forward to continue to partner with you. And I want to thank you again for being here this evening. And I'm sure we'll be calling you again soon.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next, I'd like to call up Visit Hartford for an update, please.
We'll hold up just a second until they clear the back there. So, again, welcome this evening. Appreciate you guys coming. Look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Very good. Thank you, Council President Masenti, and all the council members. For Lannos to present and give you an update what's going on with Visit Hartford. I'm Jay Ellenby, President of the Board of Visit Hartford. Sitting next to me is Eric Rebert, who is our interim Executive Director, and staff members Catherine Scholwarter, right here, and Tyler Zeisoff. I don't get that name right.
You got it right.
Yeah. We also have a number of our board members who are present with us as well, and I'd like to see if they could stand for a moment. So, we're pretty well represented here.
Thank you all for coming.
They're all volunteers, and they acknowledge, and their knowledge and expertise in the board is invaluable. They have a real passion for this industry and how we can help the community truly appreciate their efforts, and on behalf of the organization. So, I'm going to quickly go through some of the slides, some of them I'm going to really focus on. Then we also have a few guest speakers also, who are going to kind of give you their perspective about tourism, how it's impacted their areas. All right. So, this slide here really talks about our mission. And the mission is just that, promoting, promoting Hartford County and tourism, enhancing the visitor's experience. And the vision is to really showcase, and showcase Hartford County as a go-to destination. Okay. So, this circle, what this really does, it describes our markets, and we promote Hartford County as really a travel destination for tourism, how we can attract people, which generates an increase in oversight, overnight, excuse me, overnight visitors trips, visitor trips, hotel stays. And those visitors spend money in Hartford County. Tourism dollars go to local businesses, shops, restaurants, venues, and attractions. All these, all these efforts help create new jobs, hospitality generate additional tax revenue sales, which generates lower property taxes in many ways. We'll go into some specifics on that. So, what does Visit Hartford do for Hartford County? There are times, and that's one of the reasons why we do want to come out and chat and share about some of the things that we're doing, is that we do get the question, "What does Visit Hartford do?" And in some cases, we have heard that the funding that you do receive, is it too little? Is it too much? But we really don't understand, because sometimes marketing can be a mystery. That's a big part of what we do. We market and bring people to this area. So, as you see on this slide, this is the impact. This is, these surrounding events that will have taken place, we have supported. Support in some case helped bring them to the area, but mostly supported and allowed them to be successful. So, in this case, these are just a sample. We, over the past couple of years, we have worked with over 100 events, and resulted last year in 1.9 million visitors, $479 million in tourism spending, $61 million in tourism tax revenue, and 6,500 jobs are supported by tourism. That's destinations, that's restaurants, that's shops, anything that, any supports, anybody that comes in. This is a specific event, very, one specific event that we were involved with, Upper Chesapeake Baseball Festival. And it took place in April and one in June. So, two events that happened, and these were the immediate results. And this is specifically just really hotels. There we go. So, for that, this is, again, this is just for one event, or the two events that took place just for those samples, 452 room nights were booked. That's significant for these. So, that was very exciting to see that. And you can see the mix amongst all of the locations and hotels throughout the county, from Edgewood up to Aberdeen, Bellcamp, and Bel Air. One thing I also wanted to mention is, coincidentally, Visit Hartford just agreed to partner on a new initiative to bring NCAA Women's Big Ten National Golf Championships to Bullierock next spring. Pretty cool. And that's going to result in over 800 room nights from those, from those events taking place. So, we're very, very excited about that. Moving on to the data highlights, this is trying to, this is going to give you a little bit of background. The three destinations that mostly come to Hartford County is, are from Washington DC, Philadelphia, and New York City. As you see their dollar signs next, New York City, they're the ones that spend the most. We do track that. The average visitor spend is up by 4%, up to $108. And the age group is 45 to 54. We target that. We target that in publications and social media and so on. So, that's a target group that we're going after, because they do spend the most in this county. And then hotels, the revenue was up 8%, the 68.5 million from last year. And the average daily rate, ADR, is up by 7% at $102. And then the website, these are the most, most traffic that hits our website, Restaurant Week. So, Restaurant Week is a huge success, and we're always looking to have more restaurants come on board. And we've seen a lot of activity with that. And of course, events, and then things to do. So, I encourage you, if you ever have anybody who's coming in from out of town, trying to figure out something to do, go to the website, that's going to give you up-to-date information what's taking place. Okay. This is a very, very interesting piece. This is a digital marketing campaign that took place between June and September. So, it was an investment of $30,000, $30,000 and 2.4 thousand visitors to the site. Eventually, what this was, these are people who went to, we marketed to from social media, and came here. They came here, we were able to track that. Okay, how were we able to track that? By credit card, credit card data. And what the result was, was $187 in purchasing power. What that was, when you look at that $30,000, and the end result of $448,000, it's a 15 to 1 ratio. That's an incredible investment. So, there's not too many places say they can get a return on investment of 15 to 1. We're continuing to expand and advance. We continue to work with earned media opportunities. This is great with free advertising. So, we have writers and reporters and so on who want to promote Hartford County. We continue to work with them in many ways. Also, sports destination. That is a very, very big market, and we see continued growth in that. Obviously, the copper mine and other areas as well, and the expansion. But, we also know, sports tourism, we don't want to have all our eggs in one basket. And we want to make sure that we're covering other areas as well, other tournaments such as the golf, such as, as you see in here, we've worked with wrestling. So, other things that we've been working on. And then, of course, there's a Hartford Digital Passport, which some of you may have already taken part in, between the chocolate and cheese trail, ice cream trail, libation trail, and we have a lot more trails that are coming out. Next year, very exciting, the Maryland Tourism Coalition has appointed Visit Hartford to take the lead and host the 2024 Maryland Tourism and Travel Summit at Waters Edge. What this is, this is an opportunity to show off Hartford County. It's very, very exciting. So, we're going to bring all the, all the tourism people throughout the state, some from out the state, outside the state, and bring them into Hartford County. We're going to have an opportunity to show off, and show off all the good things that we've been doing here, what's going on. And then lastly, there's quite a bit of conversation. We've all had conversations with respect to hotel tax distribution. All I can say is, keep the investment in Visit Hartford. Just keep the investment in Visit Hartford. You know, right there, you see what the results are, and we already talked about the 15 to 1, the 15 to 1 ratio. So, keep the investment in Visit Hartford. So, what I want to do at this point, I'd like to introduce Kevin Mooney, who is the owner of Hartford Vineyard and Winery.
Good to see you again, Mr. Mooney.
Same here. Thank you. I'm just here to basically speak in reference to, we're a small farm winery, me, my son, and my wife. And we have a limited advertising budget. And Visit Hartford has been very good at posting our events, giving us better market spread. And in reference to that, they also, their, the dollars that they spend with us cast a broader net, because we work with other local businesses in some of our events. So, when they market that, they also market, you know, ag tourism and things of that nature. So, that's it. Thank you very much. And thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Nick. I'm not going to say your last name, Nick. I'm not going to, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Sorry, I have to write it down. My name is Nick Hatz Nicholas. I am the owner of Venetian Italian Eatery in Edgewood. This is our family's fourth restaurant, but our first in Hartford County, our first investment, commercial property investment in Hartford County. For me, the decision to, to invest in Hartford County was very simple. It's pro-business. Hartford County government is pro-business. And Hartford County has proven to be an ideal place to live and work and play. But this is also the perfect place to visit. Long-time residents may take this for granted, but someone new, as myself and my family, we're in awe, how big Hartford County is, how beautiful it is, and, you know, how much there is to do throughout the year. As you all know, you know, we have parks, the trails, museums, farms, wineries, breweries, local boutiques for shopping, and some of the best restaurants around. We can't keep this just a local secret. Last year, as Jay said, 1.9 million people visited Hartford County. It is without a doubt that our local DMO played a big role in marketing, you know, our county to tourists, to those tourists. Visit Hartford promotes our county in key markets throughout the region abroad. Can't be stressed enough, someone has to tell our story. And marketing is key, of course. Get visitors to choose Hartford County for agro-tourism or sports tourism, or just to catch a local event is, you know, brings more money to the county, and in turn, more investment and jobs. Visit Hartford is outspent by every DMO in our region, but still they compete, still they help attract events, or promote events in our county. Successful events such as the ones that happened this year, Italian American Festival, the Hot Air Balloon Festival, the Upper Chesapeake Baseball Classic that you referred to as well, the national events such as the Spring Nationals Boat Race that was held in District A, Mother's Day, last Mother's Day. I ask that everyone, you know, here, takes a look at the- I ask that everyone, you know, here, takes a look at our website and Visit Harvard's website and download the app, follow on social media, and to see everything that's happening in Harford County. There are local eateries that take advantage of this exposure, just like the wineries. Visit Harvard promotes these mom-and-pop shops all year long, but especially in January for Harford County Restaurant Week, as again Jay said, it's success. More restaurants should be owned there. And I'm, you know, whoever I come across, I let them know that exactly. So our local DMO, our local DMO has, you know, is our biggest cheerleader, that's for sure. This is a challenging task when it seems like they're out, again, they're out funded by Visit Baltimore and a lot of other ones around here. And we have, and I say "we" because I am Harford County now, you know, we have so much more to offer than everywhere else. And I can't, you know, obviously, I'm the new guy here, so you all know better. Yeah, this is something dear to me. Please keep investing in Visit Harvard. I think it definitely helps, you know, local businesses, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim Engel. I'm the general manager of the Spring Hill Suites behind the Cracker Barrel up on 543. It was the first Marriott to open in Harford County in 2001, but today I'm here speaking for all of the hoteliers. We saw good numbers with revenue. We saw good numbers with occupancy, but the fact is that individual occupancies are down for each of the hotels because we have more room nights available. But we have made it up with ADR with the helps of organization like Visit Harvard. And the strength of Visit Harvard is in its diversity of the board. We have 20-plus board members that represent various factions of businesses and live in the county. So we really have a good representation, a broad representation of businesses in the county, and that can help hoteliers in particular. And hoteliers give back by collecting this tax from visitors that come from out of the town, out of town, that spend, spend their money in hotels for multiple events, for multiple day events often. And just briefly, again, I think the most significant thing, and whether you're looking at investing in Visit Harvard or not, is the 15: to 1 return on investment. Everyone will look for that return on investment, and that number isn't created by us. That number is created, but you know, by state statistics. So thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's it?
Done?
That's it. I don't think anyone questions the value of Visit Harvard and how they help promote and let people know all around the area what Harford County has to offer when you're looking for a weekend or a special event or just a great getaway. So with that, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Again, thank you for being here. If I could just speak to Restaurant Week specifically for a second. It was probably three or four, two or three years ago, you were looking for something to do in the January, and we looked at Restaurant Week, and we saw the Venetian on the list. And, you know, we're habity grease people, so we rarely leave our orbit, but we decided to go to the Venetian and loved it. The dessert plate that they bring around at the end of the meal is the most tempting thing, you know. That, that is cruel to bring like, but the food was incredible. And we realized Edgewood is really a restaurant hub. There's a lot of great eateries in Edgewood, and we would have never tried many of those places if it wasn't for Visit Harvard, it wasn't for Restaurant Week, you know. So that was a real joy for us, and that's become somewhere that we go frequently, not as frequently as Delegate Johnson and his wife, who I know of it dearly, but, so, you know, that is a real treat. I really appreciate Restaurant Week because that's a, and it's, even as a local, it's a chance to branch out and to try new menus and try a restaurant you haven't been to before. So, you know, I really encourage everybody to participate in that. But also, you know, I just appreciate your creativity, your willingness to support so much of what goes on in Harford County. And like, people spoke to having Visit Harvard helps give small industry a big voice, you know. It allows for a new restaurant or a new tourist opportunity, a new event, to have a voice and to be seen and to be reached out across the region. So I really appreciate your work and I value your work. I know we've had a lot of conversations about what does funding look like across the state, and I just wanted to encourage you once again, if you see models that work in other counties, to send those to us, that we can look at that. That's always very helpful to us. But I always appreciate your willingness to speak and to have meetings, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Bennett. If I could?
Yes.
Restaurant Week, we're very proud of that. I believe at 46. So we have 46 restaurants. I think we can agree there are more than 46 restaurants in Harford County. So I would encourage every restaurant you may know out there to participate. You know, the more the merrier, and the more it can really increase the program, just as what you mentioned, but we're always looking to increase it. Thank you.
It's free.
Wednesday and Thursday, Start Week.
February.
January.
January, I'm sorry.
Third week in January.
To your point too, Councilman Bennett, we have, and I know Jay mentioned this, the various trails on the digital passport that we have on the website, there are over 60 businesses that are kind of core businesses that are part of that, that package. It actually goes higher than that because it's seasonal. In the summertime, we have the ice cream places and things like that. But that is, is really a good place to go to if you want to explore Harford locally and see different things. And it does help to support the local businesses, the mom-and-pops throughout the county. And coming soon, we're going to introduce a new one called the Small Business Trail, which will coincide as part of our shop local program that's coming up this year. So other businesses besides those just on the trail, like the Libation Trail or the Ice Cream Trail, will be able to participate in that. So we're really looking forward to expanding that there.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Pennman?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I know we've had a lot of conversations. Jay, thank you for you and your team. Look forward to supporting you and advocating in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Guthrie.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all for coming. All my years here, I've supported, I've supported your organization, think they do a great job. And I don't, I don't want to do anything that might change the financing that you're going, you're going to get from now on in the future. I did notice that in 2022, the county took in $3,263,946. In 2023, they anticipate $3,553,973, almost a $300,000 increase. We're looking at a substantial increase when Coppermine gets fully going, because I've had numerous meetings with Alex, who is the CEO of Coppermine, and his estimates, not mine, because he's the professional in that area. He estimates that when, they're starting to go, they're starting to get some sports going right now, but they expect to get full bore around March. And they get going full bore, they're expecting 12,000 people on any given weekend when they get full bore. And they expect that most of them that come, they're all sports, of course, and that they expect Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is when they usually come and they stay there. Consequently, the nine hotels in my district, you know, are going to be overwhelmed, and they're going to spread out, and probably going to be some more building in the area. And it's going to increase the hotel tax. Even if we are successful in being able to spend $330,000 in District A on tourism, point blank, if you read my bill, it's on tourism. It has to be, can be no capital projects, that's being on tourism. That's, that's almost exactly the amount of, of how much the hotel tax increased from 2022 to 2023. So consequently, if you keep 330,000 into District A, the rest is all going north, where it's, where it's gone for the last eight years, I might add five and a half million, and then none of that got spent in District A. But I, I think it's, it's going to work for everybody because of the increased revenue. And I'll tell you what you really need to do, you want to, you want to get yourself really shocked, and I've done this. I went over and I looked at all the other counties in the state to see what they, hotel taxes there, how much they collect, how many percent, where it goes, how it's spent. You're going to be shocked because almost every single county that has a hotel tax, a portion of their hotel tax goes to the general fund. Can you imagine that? Not one single penny of the hotel tax in Harford County goes to the general fund. Baltimore County, look it up, I know you all will, look it up. Baltimore County hotel tax is 9.5%. 6% here. It was 8%, went to 10, and now they settled on 9.5. 9.5 in Baltimore County is $11 million, $11 million. You know how they break it down? Look it up. 8% of the, of the hotel tax in Baltimore County goes to tourism. 92% goes to the general fund. And you look at all the rest of the counties, you're going to see the same thing. You're going to see almost every single county takes money out of the hotel tax. Now, I don't know how they do it, okay, because to me, that ain't right. To me, that bill was done in Annapolis, and it was sent, and that money is supposed to be spent on tourism, you know? That's why when me and Pat sat down and talked about this, and look, you know, I want to make sure that if there's a bill, that it says you can't spend any money on, on capital projects because that's supposed to be tourism. So I don't know how all these other counties get away with taking this money and putting it in a general fund, but they do. Do a little research, like I did, you'll see, you'll see, you know, exactly what I'm, I'm talking about. But, and, and I fully support your organization, think it's great, and I think that if we spend some, some of this money in, in the District A where it's raised, at least half of it, I think everybody's going to be happy, and there's still going to be plenty of money go north, as it has for the last eight years. And I don't think anybody's going to be, be short-changed, particularly with the increase in revenues of about 330,000. And I, I expect when Coppermine gets full bore, I think our 3.5 million is going to raise to 4 million, and everybody's going to be, everybody's going to be happy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. I was kind of hoping Matt Scales would be here this evening, but I don't see him in the audience, and we just wanted to take a minute to recognize him and thank him for his service at Visit Harvard. And if I may, Mr. Janjordano, would you read what we have, please?
Be it hereby known that the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on its 14th day of November 2023, recognizes Matthew Scales, Executive Director, Visit Harvard, for his service and leadership of the Visit Harvard organization and promoting tourism throughout Harford County. We wish you the best of luck on your future endeavors.
So if I may, I'd like to hand Jay, you this. Can you see that he gets this?
Of course.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And, um, same with you. No, appreciate it. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Thank you again for your presentation. Appreciate it. And I'm sure we'll all be talking more in the future. day 23-027, November 7, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions, we have none. Nine, introduction of bills, we have none. 10, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 23-032, tax credit for properties near refuse disposal system, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-032.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Moved to second to approve Bill 23-032. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero on a negative, Bill 23-032 is hereby approved. Agenda number 12, enrollment of Bills, Bill 23-032, tax credit for properties near refuse disposal system is certified as being the text finally passed. 13 unfinished business, we have none. 14 new business. At the request of the County Executive, we will be pulling Resolution 03823 and 03923. Mr. Bennett.
Yep, so these were two resolutions about adding two properties to the enterprise zone to receive enterprise zone tax credits. And unfortunately, the process written out in our county code had not been followed through that. I had a constituent reach out and share that with me. It's section 123-438, section, or subheading D of that, that says, "A committee composed of the Director of Economic Development, the Treasurer, and the County Council Member who represents the council district in which the majority of the properties in the enterprise zone are located shall review the application and determine whether the property qualifies for the tax credit. If the committee finds that the property qualifies for the tax credit, it shall forward its findings to the County Council, which by resolution shall approve the owner's application if it finds that the property qualifies for the credit." You know, one of those properties falls in District F, and there had been no committee formed, no meeting amongst those people, and that really needs to take place before a resolution can be moved forward. So with that in mind, we made a request to the Executive's Office to hold back that resolution, and then once the committee meets, and we're, we met today, and we're in the process of voting via email, and once that all gets finalized, if the committee finds that the, you know, the property is fit, then they will forward that to the County Council via resolution, and that could be reintroduced at the next meeting and still be voted on before the end of the year. But we just wanted to really make sure that that part of the code is followed, so that we're not taking any accidental shortcuts in, you know, handling everything properly. And I am going to be following up to, to find just past minutes or records of previous committee meetings for previous areas added to the enterprise zone, just to make sure everything's been followed. You know, there's a lot of concern and contention around the enterprise zone amongst constituents. We've all heard it. We've all gotten the emails. We've all heard the public speakers. And a lot of that falls in District F. And so just doing my due diligence to make sure everything has been followed properly and will be followed properly moving forward. I really appreciate it. You know, Mr. Richardson especially, but everybody from the Executive's Office who was responsive to that need in the past week. And I'm confident in the future, it will all move forward smoother and maybe less frantic than today. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie.
Yeah, it was in a frantic meeting because the other property isn't District A, so it was interesting, even though it's about my 13th year, that was, that was one of the more interesting meetings I think I've set in. I'm being nice, right? I'm being nice. And mine had to do with Coppermine and the property there, and we got everything worked out, just took a little time, it took a little, everybody get their heads together, and we got it done. And I voted today, and I voted yes. And I voted today, and I voted yes. So I think it's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. So we may see something next week for introduction. Agenda number 17, comments and input from attending citizens, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President, we have four speakers this evening. Beth Pajoli, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Beth Pajoli, 2740 Green Road, Baldwin, Maryland. Thank you for your time tonight. First, thank you for the seven to zero favorable vote on Bill 2327. I'm grateful for the correction in the code to begin the separation of residential use from business use. This is a step in the right direction to helping correctly forecast school enrollments, but more work needs to be done. First, a few comments from last week's council meeting. The comment that this council was shocked by the Hickory Apartments gave me pause. I've been watching legislation for over 10 years, and I've witnessed zoning code changes introduced and approved by previous councils that have created loopholes for the development community. Additionally, one key piece to intense residential and business development is the development envelope. Without public water and sewer, apartments and mixed use are not an option. I'm not sure when the Hickory parcel was added to the development envelope, but I know the Foston expansion happened during the 2016 master land use process just seven short years ago. Our community fought hard to stop this specific expansion. That one key change opened the door to an upzoning during the 2017 comprehensive zoning review, and just like that, 50-plus acres of cheap agricultural zone land became highly profitable R2 and B3 zoned land, a big win for the owners of these properties. Often, land use decisions and legislation are brought forth for that reason, to benefit a single developer. Citizens try to stay vigilant, but as Mr. Guthrie mentioned, it's not always easy. One word or one sentence in a sea of papers are difficult to track. I want to thank Mr. Guthrie for his past and present efforts to reduce school capacity, building moratorium for the APFO. Our community is anxiously awaiting a new bill to reduce this trigger from 110% to 100%. As we like to say, full is full. Mr. G. and Mr. Riley, I want to thank you both for standing by efforts to correct the wrongs of previous councils. I have high hopes for you both. Mr. Bennett, I'm not sure if you know this, but you were the rock star of the November 7 meeting. I monitor social media, and there were multiple comments about how you are truly committed to representing the citizens of your district and this entire county. Thank you. Mr. Vincente, thank you for maintaining a civil environment for this legislative process. I recognize the challenge of keeping everyone on track, and your efforts are appreciated. Mr. Penman and Ms. Sodles, I was surprised by your favorable vote on Bill 2327. Many of us were. I'm not sure what influenced you, but I'm willing to talk further about how positive, common sense legislation will go a long way to making Harford County the best it can be. On that note, please know that Foston is watching, and we stand ready to work with all parties to benefit our beautiful county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. Now reviewing the situation in personnel, Harford County Council and government, I wonder, did any of the city members of the council understand Bill 2013-4 when they voted for it? Did any of them consult any of the FAA advisory circulars or other documents on design, construction, and operations of airports, relevant sections of the Code of Federal Regulations, the Annotated Code of Maryland, or the COMAR, Bill 13-4? The hearing examiner's recommended decision, Mr. Guthrie, you were on that council. What informed your vote? Council President Vincente, you agreed to resolve the issues I presented. You have not and have been quite silent on the matter. What school of leadership does that come from? The rest of the council, this is all about government and governance. This is about you. Will you formulate tough questions, get answers, stand on principle, represent residents of Harford County, be the change, or just go along to get along? And then there's the county administration, a county executive who has somehow concluded that residents sending in their concerns are seeking information on attending his next event, although he does look forward to responding in a timely manner, or maybe not. And the Director and Deputy Director of Planning and Zoning, do you suppose they spent much time researching FAA advisory circulars or other documents on design, construction, and operations of airports, relevant sections of the Code of Federal Regulations, the Annotated Code of Maryland, or the COMAR, Bill 13-4? The hearing examiner's recommended decision, Maryland law and special exceptions? Does anybody know how their decisions and actions were informed? They can most charitably best be described as confused about the county code and the special exception granted in zoning case 5814. Enforcing some of the code some of the time, ignoring the rest, is not a good way to plan land use and zoning, planning or good government for that matter. Hopefully, they can find their way. That pretty much summarizes government and governance, land use and zoning in Harford County. I would submit that a swamp is not necessarily defined by its geographic features. Sometimes it's defined by the people in it. Good night.
Carolyn Zinner, followed by Bert Dixon.
I believe Carolyn left. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Bert Dixon, 1005 Stromco Drive, Foston, Maryland. Thank you, President Vincente, and thanks to each of the County Council members for listening to what I have to say. I'm especially appreciative to each one of you for the votes on the three bills last week at the council meeting, and acknowledge that there were strong opinions on the number of the bills. With regard to 23-028 to provide for term limits for County Council members, I stand before you to propose the next step. My proposal, while perhaps more difficult to implement than 23-028, instills greater political power with the people for whom council representatives are intended to represent. I encourage the council members to craft a bill that introduces a charter amendment for a process by which citizens may remove elected officials from their positions before the end of their elected term through a recall process. Thirty-nine states, including Maryland, allow for recall of elected officials at some level of local government. Several municipalities within Maryland currently have a recall process. While there is no statewide recall in Maryland, such a bill was introduced in the Maryland House under House Bill 313 in the Maryland General Assembly in January of 2022. So existing municipal provisions within Maryland and the introduction of a bill at the state level demonstrates both a precedent and public interest for a recall provision. Within the state of Maryland, from 2014 to 2022, there were only five attempts at recall, only one of which ultimately went to ballot. And in that one case, the recall resulted in the removal of the elected official. This provides evidence that the recall process is not a free-for-all, but is instead used infrequently and judiciously, resulting in a removal only in the most egregious circumstances. In these rare cases, waiting for the next election cycle for the term of an official to expire is not an adequate option, as irreversible damage can be wrought during a four-year term. I must emphasize that the majority of our Harford County elected officials have served and continue to serve with integrity and with the best interests of the citizens of Harford County, while also working to maintain a healthy economic environment and preserve our valued quality of life. To all of these, implementation of my proposal would have absolutely no impact. So as we celebrate the 250th year since the establishment of Harford County, there is another important anniversary. It has also been 250 years since the Boston Tea Party, wherein the patriots showed their displeasure of legislation imposed upon them by jettisoning tea into the Boston Harbor. It is only fit that the citizens of Harford County should have the right and be provided with legislative mechanisms by which to remove officials that do not perform their sworn duties. Adding a recall process to the Harford County Charter would further ensure that our county government is in service of the people, by the people, and most importantly, for the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers. Mr. President.
Very good. Agenda number 16, business from council members. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. By the way, the fellow behind here, I meant to say something about the Venetian Palace because it's one of my favorite restaurants. Me and my wife, we eat there a lot, and it's in a neighborhood, it's right on Route 40, and it's just about a couple, it's about a block from Edgewood Road. And on Edgewood Road, that's where the nine hotels are on the left side, and Copper Mine's on the right side. So all these people, they're going to be coming from the hotels now down, they're literally going to be passing Route 40, and that restaurant is literally right there. We used to have Bruno's there too, which was, recently I was happy because I heard somebody bought it. That was the good news. The bad news, they're going to turn it into an office. So I thought for sure they would turn it into a, maybe they didn't know about Copper Mine coming because it's, you know, at a restaurant there, it'd be a small goldmine. Just recently, we had the Fall Festival at the, in Joppetown at the Copley Parish, which is church, a church that's been there for 18 years, and they go back into the colonial days, and they, people dress all up and spend the whole day there. It's just a little bit chilly that day, but probably kept the crowd down. But, and the County Executive came and wished everybody the best. And they have a, they have a special day for enjoying a variety of foods, drinks, and petting zoo, pony rides, games, face painting, historic exhibits for the entire family. It's, Copley Parish is honored to open its stores and grounds to share such history for you. I know a fellow just got up there and spoke about the 250 years. Guess what? Joppetown's 320 years. They're 320 years. And if you go down, there's a lot of historic stuff in Joppetown people don't know about. One of the biggest, you know, is the house that is built there on the right, the last building that, from the colonial days. And it was, it was built there and was built there by bricks and stones and everything that came from Europe. Believe it or not, it's hard to believe when you go down there and you look at the canals and all, and you think tall ships come up those canals. I don't know how they got it on a railroad bridge, but that's another. And it's hard to believe that they brought all that brick and all and built that house, and that's where Colonel Rumsey, because it's called, you know, it's called Rumsey Island, and Benjamin Rumsey lived in that house and basically ran the wars. He was a big official, and he ran a lot of the wars they had going on right out of that property. So a lot of history down there, here in the area. Take a look. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Charlie Riley Community Service Scholarship Foundation on November 8, and I just want to acknowledge the winner. And they really had two awards. One, graduating Harford County seniors who demonstrate leadership commitment to the community through activities and community service. So they won from each high school. And the second, fire and ambulance service personnel wanted to expand their knowledge through education, they had one from each fire company. And remarkably, the same young lady won both awards, Kaylee Nordstrom. So congratulations to Kaylee on the awards and her accomplishments. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. On Monday, I attended the grand opening of Life Med. This is probably, I think, their fourth location. It's located underneath Copper Mine Athletic Club in Bel Air. They built that probably a 5,000-square-foot facility and all kind of services they offer. So if you've heard about them before in Timonium, and you want to check them out, they are open in Bel Air. So congratulations to Vinnie Magliano and Eric Rittenmeyer on the grand opening of their facility. I think they're going to do a grand opening ribbon cutting down the road. So that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Riley?
Yes, went to the Discovery Center of Ribbon Cutting on Friday. If you haven't got there, I would highly recommend you go down and see the Discovery Center in Bel Camp. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Hi, everyone. Just wanted to talk about a few things that are coming up with the holidays upon us. Harford County is accepting donations for their Thanksgiving food drive until this Friday. There's more information on the website, and there is a clothing drive to benefit the Harford Family House in Aberdeen. It's actually being held on Saturday from 12 to 3:00. Socks, hats, jackets, scarves, gloves, and boots, and that will be at the Church of Reconciliation here in Bel Air. And then next Tuesday, from 10 to 12, the Harford County Public Library, Haverty Grace Branch, is hosting the Harford Community Action Agency Mobile Food Pantry. And I think that's all I have. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Thank you again. I want to celebrate and congratulate those who were elected and reelected in our Aberdeen and Bel Air City and Town elections. You know, we have Mayor McGrady returning in Aberdeen, along with Adam Hyob and Tandra Ridgely, who were reelected, and then, you know, Timothy Lindacamp and Bill Montgomery, who were elected to the City Council and then in Bel Air. There were three new members to the Board of Commissioners, so congratulations to them. We all know how hard it is to be elected, and, you know, these were all contested races, which is always exciting. In these small races, sometimes three people run for three seats, and, you know, it's not democracy. So it's important that we have lots of people run, lots of voices, lots of options. So that was exciting, and, you know, congratulations to them. It's been a very busy week. I attended the Veterans Day Parade in Haverty Grace, which is a proud town, a tradition. I also attended a community conversation in Edgewood that was focused on just some recent gun violence that's taken place in Harford County and just what the community can do to address that. And that was a really rich conversation, an important conversation, and I was glad to be there for that. I also attended Harford County Climate Actions Annual Meeting at the Estuary Center. You know, I represent the majority of the waterfront in Harford County from Haverty Grace through Abington. And so, you know, environmental protection is very important to me, protecting our water, protecting our waterfront communities. And so I was thankful to be invited to that and to attend that. And then I also just want to, like others had said, congratulate those from the Charlie Riley Scholarship recipients. My wife attended on my behalf that night, and, you know, it's just great to be able to celebrate and celebrate some members of our council staff who were former recipients of that, which is just really nice. And then also the Discovery Center. If you haven't been there yet, to find the time, especially if a child in your life, is a lot of fun, a lot of exhibits. It's our own little science center right here in Harford County, which hopefully one day won't be so little as it expands and grows, and what they have already is tremendous. And you don't have to drive all the way to Baltimore to have some fun and explore some science with the youth in our community. So with all that, that's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
Let me make a comment. I wanted to share something with you because it's more of, me and Pat sat down and talked about this for quite a while, and I didn't know whether I wanted to really talk about it on public inter, but I figured if I'm not here at the next meeting, people are going to start wondering, well, where is he? And rumors start, and where is he at, and all that kind of stuff, and he's doing this. So we talked about it, and we thought it would be good to bring this up and talk about it to the public because it has to do with colonoscopies. I don't know, how many people in this room has had a colonoscopy? Good. Because they're very important. They're very important. I've known in my lifetime, I've known some people who didn't bother, and then all of a sudden, it was too late, and they perished. And one of them was my daughter, when she was in her early 50s, and she was supposed to get a colonoscopy, and she didn't do it, and she didn't tell me, and one thing led to the other. Then when it was time to do it, it was too late, and they determined that she was stage four cancer in February of 2019, and the day before Thanksgiving, and we have that coming up every year. She passed. And very famous, I'll get to the point in a minute, but... And very famous, I'll get to the point in a minute, but a very famous person, I'll feel, some of us old times remember, Katie Couric on TV. Her husband wouldn't get a colonoscopy, and then found out it was too late. And these are people with a lot of money, they got a lot of, you know, stuff going for them. And he, it was too late for him, and he passed away. So Katie Couric, she went on live television and did a colonoscopy on television, and she didn't even get put to sleep. She stayed awake for the whole process, and they had a monitor right there on TV, and you could see the thing going through her colon. So the reason I bring it up, I've had three colonoscopies, and they've all been clear. Usually if, if you, you get a polyp in your colon, they, they burn it out and test it, make sure it doesn't have cancer, and that's good. And, but in cases where they're clear, and all three of mine have been clear as far as polyps are concerned, then you only do one like every ten years. If you, they catch a polyp in there, they usually do it every three years. Now, it varies with doctors of how many, how often they do it. But I just had my last one a couple of months ago, and there, there was no polyps, but there was a slight mass on the inside of my colon that they, they nipped a piece off of it. It was benign, so that was good. But they've got to go in and cut it out, cut it out. And they just can't get it normally through a colonoscopy. So these are the things, and the reason I talk about this, I'm not looking for, you know, about, you know, looking for prayers, but I, I, I'm saying it more because I want people out there, particularly people in their late forties, early fifties. You got to start, that's when you got to start, and, and get it done. There's never any pain that you're going to have when you have a problem. But when you get the pain, it's usually too late. So you need to go and get that done. I have to go into Mercy Hospital tomorrow morning, eleven o'clock. They operate at one. It's going to be a three-and-a-half-hour operation. And they'll take, take it all out, and then we'll know something maybe tomorrow, four-thirty, five o'clock. So again, it's, it's just to remind everybody out there how important a colonoscopy is. It's nothing to it. You go, they put you under, you wake up, it's done. And you don't even know what happened. So I bring that forward to all of you people who are in your late forties, you know, and fifties. We got some, some sitting up here. Make sure you get a colonoscopy, and get it timely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. We'll all be thinking about you and pulling for you. And if you need anything while you're down and out, you know you can call on all of us up here, okay? So comments from the President. As you know, or maybe don't know, but last Tuesday after the council meeting, I packed my truck and headed to the Eastern Shore for a decoy show for the five days. And while I was gone, I missed the Riley Foundation banquet, or Scholarship banquet. And I'm an honorary member of that. And I just want everybody to know what a great organization it is, how they recognize different individuals throughout the county. Want to congratulate all the recipients, and absolutely thank the entire board for all the efforts that they do to, to make this event move forward. Ms. Harris is on the board, as, you know, and Chip and Bruce Riley, they're just a great group of guys and gals. So congratulations to Kaylee Nordstrom for, for the, the award she won. And then, as I said, I was gone all week, so I got to thank Jeannie for taking care of not only the home front, but the business. She handled everything there. And while I was gone here, my office never missed a beat because of Ms. Harris, Ms. Lenz, and Ms. Sapp. So I want to thank them as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.